2021 City Council Meeting, and we will first have our opening provided to us by Council Member Andre Lortz.
Our Father in Heaven, as we meet together as a city council, we invite thee to be with us and help us as we discuss matters affecting the residents of our community that we may be able to use wisdom and prudence as we discuss things that will affect their lives and try to assist them with the challenges they face and to help strengthen our community that we may be able to get through all the difficulties that we have at this time. We pray that thou would bless and help those that are struggling through the pandemic, that have been affected by it, that they may be able to receive comfort and be healed. We are grateful for all the many blessings we enjoy in this community, for the support we give to one another, and pray that we may continue to help each other and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Do you join me for the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to go a little bit out of order. We're going to move consent items forward. So I would entertain a motion on consent.
Can we hold off on D? Just because I'd literally like to recognize somebody who's going to do public service.
All right.
So I would make a motion that we approve consent items A through C.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion by Council Member Blackham, seconded by Council Member Lortz. Let's go to a vote. Council Member Barber.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion is unanimous. Let's go to item D, and I'd like to invite Mr. Hatch to come forward. And why don't you just introduce yourself?
Great, yeah. My name's Dave Hatch. I've been in Kaysville for about two years. I'm from Salt Lake County, Murray. I grew up in Bountiful, and I've got two girls, seven and a four-year-old. And thank you for having me. I'm interested in history. I'm interested in the Historic Preservation Committee, and I'm also on the community council for Case Creek Elementary, just trying to get more involved in the community. Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. All right. I would entertain a motion on D.
I'll make a motion that we approve D, appointment of David Hatch as a Historic Preservation Committee member.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Member Adams, seconded by Council Member Tran. Any comments?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to a vote. Council Member Blackham.
Aye.
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 Motion is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Now we're going--
Our mics are live, by the way, whether you hit the button or not.
Okay, so--
FYI.
So those listening--
Mind your Ps and Qs.
A lot of entertainment.
Okay. We're gonna go to a presentation, and Rex, why don't you come forward? Rex is here representing UDOT.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thanks for inviting me to come today. Want to talk a little bit about our project and answer any questions you guys have. I don't want to take all your time, but I'll answer whatever you need to. I just brought a couple of slides. I'll get connected here and hopefully it'll all work. Of course, the main concern is talking about pedestrian crossing at 200 North. We have been working with staff on what that may look like, and of course, we have letters sent to Carlos addressing that issue, and they've given me direction to continue on with our policy. Want to talk a little bit about how we came to the decision of what we're planning on building there and take any feedback or comments from you guys that we can try to incorporate and make the best as possible. What we did build there, we based on our built on our policy, which gives us a little bit of flexibility. And I'll show you here when it pops up on the screen. Hopefully it'll pop up on the screen.
Might have to share your screen.
I think you might be the first person that we've had present in council from the podium, so there might be a few tweaks.
Just before the meeting, I hooked it up and it worked.
It works, so--
That's always how it goes, though. You had no audience, so.
It's always AV stuff.
On your computer, does it say to share my screen or whatever?
There we go.
There we go. That looks better.
There we go. Look at that. You walk in and it works. Thank you. Well done.
So basically, kind of what we have, a situation here in our policy, we have a rubric. I'll just go across down through here.
Oh, that's simple.
We have a flow chart, and this will just make it simple. We're dealing with the multi-use paths, and so it tells us to go right to the table. All these others, we don't have to follow down through all that, but it tells us to go right to the table. I'm gonna look at this table. And we are in a situation where we have four more lanes. We don't have a raised median, but we have an ADT that's less than 9,000 and less than 30 miles an hour. So basically, what it tells us to do is we have these options here. So basically, we have a low-speed road with the low volume, and it tells us here that we can put in some enhancements. And so we're gonna put in advanced pedestrian warning signals. We're doing high-visibility crosswalk. We're not putting in medium refuge to island in there because that wouldn't be appropriate because we don't have a raised median. We don't want to leave people out in the middle of the road. We're not doing bowl baths. We're doing pedestrian activated flashing beacons. We're doing the rapid flashing beacons, and we're actually doing-- we are gonna do overhead lighting, and we actually have one item that we're doing that is not on the policy that we're-- it's kind of experimental. We've only done it in a few places where, since we have night-skied lighting, as an environmental commitment, we're keeping the lighting of the corridor as low as possible. We're gonna put in high-intensity lighting that when you activate the pedestrian crossing, it lights up the intersection, boom, flashes, lights it up. And so it's gonna have high-intensity lighting. And so the other options on the other side, the high-level pedestrian enhancements, oftentimes you'll see, and people might ask us, why don't we do a hawk? And I think you guys have just installed a hawk there on 200 North. Usually, you put a hawk in at a mid-block crossing, not at a light control. Eventually, this will be signalized. The ramps are not gonna be signalized initially, but as traffic picks up over time, as it warrants, we anticipate that sometime there'll be a traffic signal there. So it's not a place that we would want to put a hawk signal. And so if you did a hawk signal, we'd have to go upstream. We'd have to reroute traffic up to a mid-block crossing area and cross them and come back. And that's an option, but I don't think that's the option that we'd probably want in the best interest for the city. But we put in all these other low-level pedestrian enhancements that we could try to make it to take it to the end of the top of the policy that I'm allowed to do. And so that's what we've basically proposing to do. Initially, we had three right movements for the ramps, which would mean that we would have to cross multiple times. We're removing them. We're keeping the footprint low. The extra lane that we would have had for the three rights to merge onto the lane are actually now free-up space that in the future, if we do have a pedestrian crossing go over, we have a little extra right-of-way width. We are kind of in a little bit of a tight constraint. So we want to do anything and everything we possibly can. If perchance that the city is able to secure funding to look at a crossing in the future, that gives us more options. I think there's other options as well that may be more suited to putting a pedestrian crossing right at a signalization, which would be kind of hard to design, but maybe do like what Leighton has done to the north of you, cross the corridor and put a crossing south of the corridor and then put a trail on the west side. So we have trail on the east side, trail on the west side, and then pedestrian crossings on either side of the interchange. So you're not making that crossing right at the interchange, and I think it actually would function better. I think you could probably do it more cheaply in the tight constraints that we have to build, MSC walls, we have the Central Davis Sewer Pump Station that we have to deal with, and the light there at that location. But it's obviously something that we put in these type of crossings everywhere. We do have at-grade crossings. We believe our policy has been thoroughly vetted. They are safe crossings. Other conditions that we have on the corridor, we do have other at-grade crossings. We do, on some of the local streets, we have at grades. In fact, we have no pedestrian overpasses on anything but when we cross the West Davis Corridor itself. So one of the similar crossings that we have is like up at 193, we have an at-grade crossing there. Their trail system actually now is actually exists, and now it will actually have an at-grade crossing. ADT there is a little bit higher. The speeds are actually a little bit higher. We still believe that's a safe crossing. And all the other crossings on the interchanges where we have ramps that the roadway goes over West Davis gives us opportunity to pull box culverts through a lot more cheaply. And so the contractor opted to put those in because they were cheaper for him than making out-of-way travel. Trying to think what else. I mean, do you have any questions for us? I mean, that's basically--
Yes.
I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
Because, you know, this is Kaysville City's crossing, and I ride this bike crossing, I mean, this bike trail, and this bike trail goes all the way from the north end of Utah Lake to the mouth of Weber Canyon. And I cannot believe the pains and the construction and the things that they have done to make sure that people do not conflict with cars on this trail system. This is not like the DRNG rail system that goes through neighborhoods. This is a regional trail system that moves people from one end of the valley to the other, and at-grade crossings are not safe. And you can give me statistics. I knew you were gonna come in here and show me what your policies were, but that's not what Kaysville wants. And when the highway is done and built and you're gone, people are gonna say, how come Leighton got a below-grade crossing? How come there's below-grade crossings down here in Farmington? Why did Kaysville have an at-grade crossing that is a direct conflict with cars? To me, that makes no sense. And I believe it was, you know, it was kind of given to everybody in the beginning when this project first came out that there would be no at-grade crossings on this, just like there-- I don't believe there's any real at-grade crossings when they put the legacy in. They went out of their way to make sure there were no at-grade crossings on this trail system. It's a regional trail. It's not safe to have cars and people in conflict, and we're talking about a freeway interchange. This isn't just a street, a local street going through a neighborhood. And yeah, there are some at-grade crossings on the Jordan River Trail System, but they're always where it's existing infrastructure, not where it's new infrastructure going in. And so I know you have a policy here, and we want to work with you. We're hoping that we can work together with you to do this and do it right, because we don't want to pass it down the road to our kids and cost three times the amount it would cost now. It's a big project. It's, you know, I don't know what the price tag is. Last time I heard, it was up around $800 million. It might be more or less than that. But we're talking about a very insignificant amount to get this done and done right, to make this a good regional trail system, because my experience is, when it doesn't work for bikers, especially people who use the regional trail, they just get off of it and go out on the streets. And now they're even more of a conflict with the traffic and people. And so, you know, we're working hard. I think it's a good time to bring county, you know, bring county in and talk to them. We see a real need for this, and we've been expressed from UDOT early on, because we've been working at this since around last May-June, that if we would come up with some money, then UDOT would look at that. And I think, why don't you come on up here, Jeff, and talk? And we've got a representative from the county here, and I think together with UDOT, we can work this out and do it right the first time.
My name's Jeff Oiler. I'm a Davis County planner. I've been working on this project, the trail portion of this project since the beginning, and there's been, there has been a lot of discussion about this over quite a few years. The points that I'd like to make are kind of just reiterating a couple of things Mike said. The legacy trail system that is in existence now, that was built as part of the Legacy Highway, which is a 12-mile section between Farmington and North Salt Lake, is far and away the busiest trail system that we have in this county. It's not even close. That's where the, we have the most amount of users, and the number-one stated reason for that is no at-grade crossings. You've just got this free flow of traffic, and there isn't the problems that you have on the DNRG trail with the gates and the crossings and things like that. People feel safer. I mean, that is a proven fact and bears itself out. And this is, the West Davis Trail is an extension. It's a direct extension of the Legacy Trail. And when it's all said and done, it will be the county's trail system to maintain, and we will maintain it as one system. The Legacy and the West Davis Trail will probably name it something, so it's all called the same thing. I don't know. We haven't decided that. But the point is, is that it's going to be busy right from the get-go. These major regional trails like this now, the DNRG, the Legacy, the Immigrant Trail, they're as busy as some city streets are. We closed, Questar Gas closed a section of the Legacy Trail for a year and a half, and it was just, it was a mess, trying to route people around and all the complaints and things like that. These are active transportation corridors, and they are very well utilized and will just continue to be more and more so into the future. Now is the time to do it right. Now is the time. It will be imminently more difficult to do this after the fact. It will be, it will be, it will be double the cost, if not more. There have been accommodations made at some of the major other interchanges on this highway system. This needs to be considered. Now is the time. I think we need to work with UDOT and sit down and figure out how we can make this happen. I'll submit that Davis County is willing to be a financial partner in this effort, and we would like to have some additional discussions, and they need to take place soon, to see if there's a way to resolve this now. That's what I think needs to happen.
Yeah, we're all trying to save money, but make this. I would love to see this trail cross earlier than the 200 North intersection, go on the other side, so people can utilize the parking right on the other side and then tie into the Leighton Trail, because it does cross under there, over in Leighton about, it's less than a quarter of a mile past 200 North, and then it does go under, and is a grade-separated crossing, and it goes over to the parking right in Leighton. I don't know how Leighton was able to get that up front. I wish we would have gotten the same, you know, and that's, I think that's all we're asking, is to try to make this as user-friendly as possible, as safe as possible, and get the conflict between cars and people out of there.
And I will also say that the City Council and the city would, will also pledge to participate financially in this as well. It is important to the well-being, not only of those who are using the trail, but also those who are using the on-and-off ramp there as well. So we would love to get this, whatever options you have available on that, we'd love to participate on that with you.
Rex, one of the things that you mentioned, I shouldn't say Rex, but Mr. I only remembered your first name.
Rex.
Mr. Rex.
Is it Rex Rex?
It's Mr. Rex. If we're okay with that. You can call me John. You mentioned that you believe there will be a light. I mean, I'm kind of shocked that there isn't a light going in there initially, but I don't know traffic studies and whatnot. How far along are you thinking before we put a light at that intersection?
I imagine it probably might. I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know how the traffic numbers will change over time, but we build according to the need. And so it could be five, 10 years before it's warranted.
Okay. I just, I mean, I guess when you mentioned the light, to me, what rings a bell that you anticipate it's going to be busier in five to 10 years, which means that using this, what are you calling it, using this as your, like, roadmap to what you do is going to change in five years of what we should do. Would you say that's correct?
Yeah.
There's gonna be more traffic there. You anticipate--
We'll have more traffic everywhere, and we, like I said, we build as the need arises.
And I just, I mean, based on that comment, it seems like everything's gonna be set up to put in a light, because all you have to do is put in the light. But we can't just put in the below-grade crossing very easily in five years. However, this all will change. We will see higher numbers. We all know that that's going to happen.
Well, I don't think you'll ever see an underpass. We probably won't build an underpass there if one's built, just because of high groundwater. But to build an overpass, yeah, we'll have to design it and figure out how that would work.
And I guess my point is similar to what everybody else it sounds like is saying, is we know that there's going to be more traffic there. Like you said, it's just, it's going to happen, and we know that there's going, that these, all of these things that you have in place for, that determine whether or not you do it.
So the determination of what we followed for the policy is based on 2050 numbers. So in the year 2050, we still believe that the ADT will be under 9,000 vehicles in 2050.
Okay. Okay. I still think we need to have one, but I don't, I think that if you're gonna need a light, you're gonna need, does that make sense? I mean, I don't know. It seems like to me--
Well, I think--
Would you be willing to bid in? Will UDOT pitch in? I mean, if the county and the city are gonna pay, will you guys pay?
I can't commit funds, but here again, our region director, you know, we can work with him and, you know, I have to follow policy. And there's a reason why we have policy, is just so that we just don't go out there and build whatever we think we want somewhere, just because somebody wants something. It has to be a need, and so we follow policy, so we deal with every location the same way. And so I'm controlled by policy. But if you're able to come up with funding, and I'm sure our region director, because we want to make sure everybody has skin in the game when we do those type of things, I'm sure that he would probably participate. And if funding could become available, we can design. I would love to have no at-grade crossings anywhere.
Nice.
I agree.
Makes no sense.
I wish we lived in a world where we wouldn't have any of those conflicts, but we don't.
It's like Jeff was saying, that trail is so busy, and I'm sitting here trying to figure out every time a bike goes by, a walker goes by, he pushes the button and stops the traffic, and people just get frustrated. And we know they do. We watch them drive through our crossing on 200 North all the time.
We have thousands, thousands of these type of crossings in the state.
I don't--
I think that's, if I can, I think that's what, I completely understand that. I feel like you guys have followed a proper process going through this, because like you said, you can't just put whatever you think is gonna be best, because it's such a huge project. You have to have a policy, and I think what's making this a unique situation is us coming to you and bringing the county as well. And so I think that warrants, let's see what can be done.
Yeah. I'm all for, I'm all for--
Absolutely.
Trying to build what you want.
And so I think, I think we're, we have the right people in the room. I mean, obviously, we've got to get the director with the county and the city, and I think good things can come from it, but this, it has to be really fast.
Yes, time is of the essence.
And so I appreciate your presentation, and I think that helps me feel like we weren't targeted. This isn't, yeah, we weren't picked on. It's policy, and it's probably a policy that people should be aware of, that it does put, like you said, dangerous crossings, probably just because of budget. It's hard to put anything else places.
Now, I don't want anybody to say that we're putting people in harm's way because of budget. We believe these crossings are safe. Else, we wouldn't have a policy to do it. We vet these policies very, I mean, we spend a lot of time on it, and we implement them, and we're not--
You're not knowingly putting a horrible thing. I didn't just mention--
I can't see that--
None of us want these types.
Never an accident between pedestrian and cars, but we believe we implement these and--
So Mr. Harris, can I ask you a question on here? It says that there are other factors, additional consideration to gaps in this are appropriate. How many accidents would it take for UDOT to say it's unsafe?
I can't, I can't tell you.
One, five, 10?
I couldn't tell you that.
I mean, we know that we have had accidents just from the elementary school there at a 20-mile-an-hour crossing with people being hit.
I--
And now we're talking about putting bikes and people running on a trail.
Can I stop you really quick? I see where you're going with this. You have to be really careful, because once you do that, then are you gonna put great separation at every intersection you have in your own city?
No, I understand that, but we're talking about, this is gonna be, this is a freeway, on-ramp and off-ramp. It is not just a 20-mile-an-hour school zone. And so that's what we're saying. It's a heightened risk there, and we already have heard. It's the busiest trail in the county. And so we're just asking that they think there's considerations to try to see if we can't do something right now when it's the most cost-effective way to do it, to do that now. And if we're willing to put money, county's putting money in, it seems like we ought to be able to have that conversation very quickly to come to that decision.
I'm all for that.
So I have a question. What would next steps look like, then?
What's that?
How do we get there?
Next steps, how do we get there? Yeah. So we were gonna bring some money. The county will bring some money. Tell us what the process is on your end, since time is of the essence on this.
Yeah, time is of the essence. I mean, we've done an estimate of what you would like to see there. I'm not sure I would myself build what you guys want, because I don't think it's very efficient. I don't, I think, let me, I'll tell you this. Regardless if there's a crossing there or not, we will have to have at-grade crossings there, because to act, if you have a pet crossing goes over at this location, to access that pet crossing, you gotta access at the end of the ramp. So you gotta send people out to the ramps, and they have to come back over. And so you're in a situation like, for instance, if someone's at the school and they want to head north, are they gonna head south to get on the pedestrian overpass to go over to head north? No, they're probably gonna cross the street. someone's at the school and they wanna head north, are they gonna head south to get on the pedestrian overpass to go over to head north? No, they're probably gonna cross the street. It's just human nature. That's what we tend, tend to see. So I'd wanna make it as safe as possible. I would tend to have it that if you're gonna pull out your through traffic, cause what you have, you're talking about having commuter traffic or through traffic all the way through, but that doesn't necessarily make it really easy for you to access it there at two hundred north. And so we'd want, we'd wanna look at that. I personally, like I said, probably, probably the solution I would look at is is building a trail system on both the north, on the east and the west side.
It makes more sense to do the grade separated crossing before the intersection and go on the other side. I mean, and we know that they're having to raise the highway down there six feet anyway, and you only need 10 foot clearance, I believe, for these below grade crossings. But I understand you gotta have the strength to, over the top of it and stuff, so there's stuff there, but, and west of that is all drainage out there and on a lower grade. It seems like there should be a way to work this out. And, you know, I understand what you're saying, trying to put an above grade crossing there and people trying to use it in the, in the length, but the below grade, like they're doing in Leighton, Leighton over there, seems like it would be a somewhat of a reasonable solution.
Well, Leighton doesn't.
But I'm not an engineer and I'm the.
Thirty-two hundred, are you talking about thirty-two hundred?
Just the next, the next interchange, just to the north, Leighton's.
They're all, they're all pedestrian crossings open over.
Leighton's got a below grade underneath the highway.
Are you, are you talking about Weaver or?
Yeah, the one that's just, you know, there's the, the next freeway interchange that's in Leighton, before it gets to it, there's a below grade crossing that gets on the other side, according to the drawings that you sent me.
We would be interested in hearing all ideas on this.
And like I said, um, we, 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 we have experts and we, if we can come with it, and you talked about what do we need to do? I mean, the, the, we had an estimate of about upwards of five million dollars. That's, that's a really steep price tag. Um, for everybody to come to the table with that, but if, if we can come up with that type of funding, I mean, we, we can work through, you know, contractor pricing and everything and, and do the best we can to get implemented as quickly as we, we possibly can. We'll do, we'll do everything we can to.
Is there no other way to make the, like, I mean, cause I would envision wanting the kids to, even if they had to backtrack a little bit to go up and over versus crossing the street?
Yeah, we, we, you'll see this in a lot of places like on Binger Highway, that they had issues where they had school, you know, places where they have like schools. I think at West High, they even had a similar situation that you have schools and then they have to build, they have to build a prison basically to, to force everybody where they want them to go. And it can be done.
It just seems like that would, yeah, I would way prefer that. Um, anyway.
But I mean, but my whole, my whole thing is I, I don't, I'm not here to argue about what, the reason why we made the decision. I, I have a policy to follow. If we do anything outside of the policy, if you, if you're able to come up with funding and all that, I'm all for, I'm all for.
We, we can definitely participate. And, um, so, uh, Shane, if I can just task you with, let's organize, uh, a get together as soon as possible and, and hash some of these things out. That would be great. Does that work?
Sure.
All right. We really do appreciate you coming.
Sorry, the line of fire.
No, it's okay. I, I, I understand your concerns and I have those type of concerns as well and we wanna do the best we can. And one other thing I wanted to mention about, just because the, the size of this project makes it easier for us to do something like this, you guys probably know as well with the city budget that every, every penny is budgeted, right? And so when we have a contractor come on board, says we're gonna build something for this much and this is how we're gonna do and what we're gonna build for, you know, we, we don't have, just because it's a, you know, half a billion dollar project, doesn't mean that there's extra money floating under somewhere just for me to scoop up and span type of thing. And so, so, um, we do have contingencies and, uh, unfortunately in this COVID environment, you know, things aren't, aren't cheap. We're dealing with escalation costs and all that. And I'm, I'm not saying that to say that I don't have money that, that we could do this. I'm just saying that the reality is when you have projects like this, you do have really, you do have tight budgets and it's just, I, I just don't have a lot of free money to throw around. So when we do things, we, that's why we try to follow policy. And if, and if, if there's way that come with funding from other sources, let's, let's jump and do it and then when we have the opportunity to, to do these things. So anyway, thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Appreciate, um, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Euler coming to, to talk about this with us. Now we are gonna go to our action items. First item is adoption of Caseville City General Plan 2021 and we'd invite Will Summercorn to come present, please.
Mayor, could we, could we just ask about conflicts of interest as well before we?
Yes, thank you. Um, any conflicts of interest? No, no, no. How about you two over there? Any conflicts of interest?
No, Mayor.
Okay. All right, please.
Well, thanks, council members. We're, um, happy to be here tonight. This has been a long road getting here. Um, I'm here, uh, with the planning commission. Um, many of you know that I've also been a professional planner throughout my career and, um, have had some, uh, experience in working on some of these kinds of things. And so, uh, this has been a, been a good, uh, good process, a long process. It's something that I think has developed, uh, over a period of time. Um, something that in the state code, every community has to have a general plan. The city's had one for, uh, a long time, but hasn't updated it for a long time. So this was the update. Um, state code does require that the planning commission makes the recommendation to the council as to any, uh, first of all, the adoption of the original plan and then any amendments to that plan. So this would be an amendment or adoption of a modified plan. And so this, this is the plan that's now been considered by the planning commission and we're presenting to you. So what I'd like to do though, in order to kind of kick off the discussion with you all, uh, is first of all, Quan is here, who is the chair of our planning commission currently, and, uh, have him address you about, uh, what we've done and why. And then we'll go to Sam Taylor, who is, uh, our representative of our consultant, uh, that had, was very diligent and, uh, collected all of the information, the data and did all of the work to put this together. So.
Thank you.
Council members, Mayor. Uh, so ju- just real quick, I think I just wanna focus, uh, we did take a while and, uh, there's a reason for that. So this started, uh, the process started, uh, back in June of 2020 and then we had a public workshop, uh, November 10th through the, uh, 30th, uh, of January, of, uh, 2020. And, uh, when the initial information was presented to us, we thought that we just didn't have a statistically viable plan and that's why we asked, uh, uh, landmark and Y2K to go back. And, uh, they actually did that. Uh, and so what you have is, um, about a thousand fifty residents, uh, and with a, uh, margin of error of only about 2.97%. So we felt that that was a statistically valid, um, product that we're putting to you. As you may have seen the minutes of the planning commission, you know, we've been over this backwards, forwards, uh, anything that we can think of. And obviously some of you have been there, uh, at the meeting, um, and the reason why, I think this is so important for us, cause this is our guiding principle. As you may have heard, or when you look at the minutes, one of the things that we always bring up at every issue is how does this conform to the general plan? Uh, so we believe that this product that we're giving to you, uh, at this moment, uh, is a solid plan. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Sam. You get to, uh, grill him on everything. Again, thank you and thanks for your service to the city.
Thank you.
Send up the sacrificial lamb, right?
Thank you, everyone. Um, I'll, I'll try to be brief and so we can have a little discussion, but, um, as you can see here, you know, we've been meeting with, uh, the public on a number of occasions, uh, albeit, you know, a lot of that was remote, but as Quan iterated, you know, I think we've heard a lot of really good feedback and data, particularly from the community survey that was conducted. And we've met with our advisory committee on multiple occasions, um, planning commission on multiple occasions. Um, we briefed you as well. And we've met with the city staff on, you know, many occasions. Uh, so I, I think we, we worked very hard to get this tuned to be the right product for your community. And I think, uh, you know, we're, we're at a point where I, I think it, it does reflect the vision of what your, your community wants for itself going forward. I think that's the most important thing about this plan. Um, it is something you can point to as a, as a tool. Um, I'm not sure how to turn slides.
Do you have a?
You.
Oh. They're all pointing to each other.
I'll point, all right. So, um, the first of September, we, uh, completed the initial first draft and, uh, we distributed it to our advisory committee, the planning commission, yourselves and the public. So everyone got a chance to look at that. Um, we had, held a public open house here at city hall and received some, uh, feedback from that. Following that, uh, in our, in a meeting with our advisory committee and their feedback, we also heard from the planning commission. And we distilled all of that and kind of, kind of the list of changes that needed to occur. Um, so that yielded a second draft, uh, mid-November. And the biggest outcome of that was we created an executive summary. All bodies that represented the, the draft plan said, it's great, but it's long. And, uh, so the executive summary really is, you know, about capturing the recommendations of the plan in, in their, you know, purest recommendation form and, and leaving the rest in the main body of the document. Um, and it also took the, the goals and policies from chapter six, um, and included those. So, um, it, it's just really a snapshot of, of the plan, um, but it takes the most important principles and puts them forwards for an easy to access format. Um, we presented that as well as, um, and I'll get to the more specific changes we made in each of these draft iterations in a moment, but we, we presented to the planning commission, uh, that, uh, version of the, the plan. And they had additional changes that they requested, um, at that meeting, um, which can be seen in the minutes, um, from that, that planning commission meeting. Um, and so we've taken those, implemented those changes and bringing before you the third copy, uh, tonight for your consideration for adoption. So just to quickly go over the summary of changes that have been made since, uh, the original. So to reach the second draft, uh, we created the standalone executive summary, which highlighted the key, uh, recommendations. Um, and includes the, the, you know, the most important maps and goals and policies. We took the city center concept. We received a lot of commentary, both from the public as well as, uh, planning commission about simplifying it. It seemed like it was getting a little too out of hand and, uh, not being flexible enough for what could happen in the city center. So we eliminated some of the detailed uses and road configurations and made it just more of a general mixed use area. And we, you know, modified, uh, added a trail crossing at I-15 and Center Street. And that got incorporated in the transportation maps and network in general. The, uh, future land use map was also updated to reflect that. And, uh, we also made a modification to single family, what that meant in the plan, uh, so that would arrange, allow for a range of types and uses that is not just a, uh, you know, a single kind of house on a single kind of lot, but has a lot of, uh, flexibility to what a single family means, um, including attached, such as townhomes. So, um, the Parkway Street was, uh, idea that was put forward as part of the city center concept. Um, and that was de-emphasized as, uh, it's more of an idea more than a strong recommendation, but it's still in the plan as a, as a, as a concept. And we also, uh, tried to get a prioritization of projects, uh, to give some clarity as to what you should be focusing on. And it's the most important recommendations of this plan. We added a discussion on air quality to the environment section, uh, which ties in with other elements of the plan and how they affect air quality. Um, looking at the parks, master plan portion of the, the general plan, we removed Bishop's Field, uh, as it's a private property from our analysis and updated the whole master plan to reflect that. Um, and based on some other, uh, staff recommendations, we've modified some proposed park locations as well. Looking at the current draft you have right now, uh, additional recommendations from the planning commission to change were, we updated the recommendations for two hundred north to clarify that it is primarily a vehicular route. Um, that was something that was lacking, um, so we've made an extra effort to, to make that clear. And even broken it down into which segments need priority for that versus, um, pedestrian. Additional streets were added as community corridor types, which, uh, has an influence on, uh, what sort of, uh, trail uses or, uh, or bike lanes are envisioned on those streets. And we added, you know, a recommendation of priorities for those community corridors. Uh, all the transportation network was updated to reflect all the previous changes I mentioned, as well as the list of catalytic projects. And, um, we also added a further discussion on neighborhood streets and how the finer grain residential streets should be treated and handled in regards to the traffic and traffic calming and things like that. And then all the implementation measures, um, you know, we, we had some additional transport, uh, implementation measures to clarify, um, some things were, felt were missing in terms of addressing Main Street and what it, uh, should be, um, as far as pedestrian vehicle, uh, conflict, uh, looking at cemeteries and schools and making sure that that coordination continues with the organizations responsible for those. And then, uh, you know, updating the, uh, the, the mixed use, uh, there were some, uh, inconsistencies with where mixed use was termed. And so we've tried to get the terminology consistently crossed a little name and then the executive summary was updated to, to reflect all that. I have the executive summary here in the slides, but I mean, have all of you seen it and read it? I don't, I don't know. Would it be valuable to thumb through it quickly and show you it, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
Especially for those who might be watching at home where this is their first experience.
So, um, if you go back one, um, so it really breaks it down into five very simple, brief chapters. We tried to get this thing down to a, a really reasonable readable size, um, for the general public to access. Or for someone who just generally wants to get an idea of the plan, um, but also not to lose any of the finer points that are important. So, the first one is a background and introduction. It just really glosses over the process that went into creating this plan. And talks about the survey and, and the demographics briefly, um, addresses the principles, um, and, and the vision behind this whole plan. The second chapter, the place making plan, um, addresses both land use and transportation. So it has the key recommendations that came out of, of each of those elements of the plan. Talks about the different types of corridors, the city center concept, um, and how future land use should be guided, uh, moving forward as you're looking at your zoning ordinance and how it might be revised in the future. And then concludes with the goals and policies, um, from chapter six of the, the full body plan. Similarly, in chapter three, the key recommendations for affordable housing, um, and also a brief discussion on neighborhood streets and other programs and enhancements, which could increase neighborhood character and, and livability.
Block parties?
Block parties is a tool that, uh, some communities do use, yes. And, uh, uh, chapter four, green and active systems, uh, briefly touches on natural resources, but really is hitting the parks and trails piece of the plan. Um, and outlining the very key recommendations of that, as well as the conceptual maps of what is proposed for, for future changes in that, those systems. Includes with the goals and policies again. And then prosperity and opportunities really by economic development. Um, and the key, uh, recommendations for, for moving forward there. So, but thank you.
Thank you so much.
That executive summary is really helpful. Thank you.
So I'll open it up for. Yeah. So, I'll open it up for your discussion.
Okay. So, generally, what we do with action items is we go to a public hearing on that. I do not have anybody signed up to speak to this, so we'll go directly to questions from council. So, questions from council?
I, Councilmember Barber? I guess it's a question. I question it about changing something, but something fairly minor. I think it's on page seventy-four. Of course, I just lost it. We reviewed this last night with our Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and they did a really great job. They had so, so much good feedback. It was really fun. One of the things was the reference to the RAP tax or ramp tax.
Okay.
And the awesome news since the beginning of this document's creation is that we've actually passed the ramp tax. And so, we could take out, you know, the high interest and say, you know, we've proven high interest. We'll have this as a funding source, maybe just not be specific about it, and just say that that's, that is something that we have there. And then, in our ordinance that we're passing later tonight, it is the ramp, R-A-M-P. And so, you can put that in there. And also, maybe just a note, it'll be based on community input, you know, how, how it's utilized.
Certainly.
And based on the, and I think, when I looked at the general plan, it has such good data already, what people are looking for. They want parks and trails and open space, and they want to be able to use it. So, anyway, that's a fun addition that I'm happy to put in there. And especially if this document's gonna last a long time, the ramp tax will be in place for the next ten years. So...
Excellent. That's an easy change.
Yeah.
Great. Questions?
I've got a list of questions.
Okay, go for it.
So, one, I guess, maybe I'm a little bit confused, but the executive summary seems more like a guiding document to help the city council understand how to try to adopt a general plan, rather than an actual general plan of, here's the guidance of what the city is going to do or wants to do.
Okay.
Because when I look through it, I mean, we have all these recommendations, but none of them say, "This is what Kaysville is going to do." It just says, "This is what you should consider. Consider. Here's an initiative you could implement."
Okay.
And so, to me, it leaves it open to, what are we really trying to do and what are we saying we want to be? And so, that's my first general question. Like, is it supposed to be that broad and vague, or is it supposed to really say, "Here's what Kaysville has decided they're going to do and they want the city to be?"
So, I guess, your question, if I'm understanding it correctly, would be a matter of language that the general plan should more fully say, "This is what we are doing."
Well, I'm thinking that if a developer's coming to Kaysville and saying, "I want to build in your city."
Right.
What's your general plan? Do we fit in your general plan? They should be able to say, "Okay, this area's gonna be this. They're trying to accomplish this here." But if they have, if they read this document, they say, "Well, there's a map that tells me kind of like zoning stuff, but then all these other things are about what we want streets to be like and what we want parks to be like." And it's not gonna really give them any guidance whatsoever as to what come proposed to the city.
No, and that's not its purpose.
So, that's what I'm asking. And I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand the purpose of how this helps the general public and developers to actually know what Kaysville wants.
Right. So, I mean, the general plan is really there to inform just further decision-making on more detailed ordinance and more detailed plans generally. So, you know, as a developer is coming to build something, for instance, they're gonna be looking at the development ordinance, right, with the zoning ordinance and things. So, this document is there to help inform changes to that, if there need to be changes to match the vision. But really, it's a, this is a vision document and is a tool for the council, the planning commission, and city staff to then, you know, enact further policy and revise the ordinance.
Well, my concern, I guess, is that I've seen our current general plan quoted to us almost every time they come for a rezone.
Yeah.
According to your general plan, and if I take this, I'm just seeing like, "Oh, my gosh, we have just given them an atom bomb of what they can try to tell us that we want to have them do."
Right.
And instead of being, you know, "Well, that's not really what we want, because you have to go to the ordinances and here's what we say in our ordinances," well, but the general plan says. And so, that's where I'm just a little bit confused, is what message this sends out in its current form. And it's not a criticism, just, it's a question.
Can I piggyback on that before you move on to your next question? Because that was the, partially what Councilmember Lord's is saying is what was what I was trying to think, I was trying to analyze it. You could fit things to, to an argument that you have. And I wanted to ask the planning commission, put them on the spot, in looking at this, maybe they're not listening.
They're gearing up. Look at that.
For that, I mean, that's where I wonder, from their standpoint, looking at this document, does it give them more or less guidance when they're, when they're trying to decide things? Because that, I guess that's what would be my question, is how they feel also.
That's true.
But does that make sense?
How it gets applied.
Because I think, because I think they do, that, I mean, they've obviously spent more time on it. Wilf, have you, do you guys feel like this gives you?
Enough direction.
More or less direction? Does it make things more vague for you, or does it give? Because it does seem like it can be, a lot of the things, because of the length, it can be interpreted to fit the need. Is that a good thing for you? Because then you are able to analyze it and see what you feel like your interpretation of it is, or would you rather it be more cut and dry, black and white?
So, a general plan is, by its very term, general. Should be somewhat general. But it should also give you a pretty good indication of what it is that you're trying to accomplish and what your vision for the community is and how you want it to grow in the future. I think the, the plan that Kaysville had as current, that we have adopted at this point that was developed a number of years ago, is very general. And there was some, there was some benefit to that, because it really kind of allowed for some interpretation as times went along. But in some ways also, it was almost too general, because you could almost interpret it any way you want it.
Oh, yes.
So, that was a little bit of an issue.
They would definitely choose the sentences that they liked the most that they would quote to us.
Which probably will happen in, in any.
It's always gonna happen.
It's always gonna happen.
But, but the overall, I believe that you're getting the overall idea of this plan. It says things enough, at least for me, when I'm reading it, like, "We want to keep Kaysville." You know, it's, it's going along with what we got from that survey, which is, "Try and maintain that," which I think is great. And maybe to Andre and my credit, finding out more, is it, maybe it isn't supposed to be a specific building code for the way you want it to be.
I'm not looking for it to be a specific building code, but, I mean, if you go back, Nick, a few of the pages we had of the initiatives, here, right here, the implementation measures. I mean, so, if we go and approve this a plan, now, every one of these is now, the city has endorsed, these are the measures we want. And so, is the, every one of these measures is what the planning commission says we need to adopt and accept.
That's the recommendation, yeah. And that's, you know, kind of the intent for the plan, is to do that. And that's, I mean, that's pretty, that's pretty typical, pretty common for communities. There are some communities that get even way more detail on this. And I, you know, I can see pros and cons for that. Sam can probably give you a rundown of what he's seen from communities. It really is, to a large extent, what the, what the tolerance of the community is for, but that's why every community has their own plan, and they have their own officials that decide and work it over and see how far they even want to go with it.
Because I guess for me, I, I think we need to have a lot more discussion about each of the individual implementation measures that we're being recommended to accept. And there's a lot of them.
There are.
And, and one of the other questions I have is, we've got a lot of recommendations around how roads should be modified. And there's no cost estimate to any of that.
Right.
And I'm sitting there looking at it, in my mind, being an accountant, I'm going like, "Oh, there's fifty million dollars in just what we're recommending our vision for roads to become. Where's that gonna come from?" And I know developers are not gonna give us the, the fees to make that happen. And I'm sure that Josh is not gonna have the budget in the current road fee to even accomplish a tenth of that in the next twenty years.
Well, and I think that's, whenever you do make recommendations like this, you're saying, "This is ideally what we'd like to have, but it's all gonna be dependent on, A, is anybody gonna come to the community, be willing to build the kinds of things that we're saying we'd like to see happen in the community? And B, is there gonna be the money? Can we get the money to do these things? And if you can, great, but if you can't, then obviously you're not gonna be able to accomplish."
Right. And I'll just chime in here, that just by agreeing in concept with these implementation measures does not necessarily obligate you to follow through on a certain timeline. I'll give, for instance, when we did the active transportation plan, Cole, I can't remember how many, the cost of all the improvements that was in that, but until you have those things on paper in a plan, you, you can't expect to, they are lofty golf. They are lofty. But I want to assure you that you are not signing a check for that.
Right, right.
But it gives you...
As I say, a plan is aspiration.
Right.
This is what we'd like to see happen in the community. But also, per state code, a plan is advisory in the community. It's not mandatory. And so, what it's saying is, "This is what we'd like to do, but if we can't do it, we'll do something else." And you're not, as, as the mayor just said, you're not signing a check and not saying, "This is the only thing we'll do. It's the only thing we can do. And if we can't do this and we're not gonna do anything," that's not what it's saying. Saying it's not what it does. What it's saying is, "This is what we'd like to do if we can."
It's not a constitution, is what you're saying.
Yeah, no, it's not the ordinances that are supposed to be there.
Mayor, if I could, just, your recommendation, your comparison to the active transportation plan is really helpful, because it, it was. It was just guidance like that. And what I've seen since we've been here, Josh probably like, "I hate what Michelle would call about that." But every time we would improve a street, every time we had a subdivision, we would go look at it. And we would take that opportunity to say, "What is the aspiration? Is it feasible? Can we do it?" Because we, we knew what the, quote-unquote, "ideal" was. And sometimes we got it, sometimes we didn't. But at least we had that as a reference point. And I feel like, in no way would this general plan bind any council, because every, everything you look at is case by case. You know, it's to give you this nice vision of what, what it could be. And that's what I got from looking at this and looking at some other cities, is it kind of opened up my eyes, "Oh, this could be a much better place." Is, are we ever gonna get there in every neighborhood? Probably, probably not. Probably not through everything. But at least we have some guidance as we're making those decisions.
Yeah.
And it's statistically based, and it's based on what came up from our community. And, yeah, so...
If I may address, Councilmember Lord, so you brought a great question. And so, in the first section, what is the general plan, the last paragraph basically says it's meant to be a living document with room for flexibility, adoption over the next ten years. It should be reassessed and updated at least once during its lifespan. And so, when we, when we looked at this, that, we could've gone down a rabbit hole with a lot of details, but we decided to keep general, because that's not our purview, is to tell you guys what to do, give you guys suggestion. And the city council is the one that actually eventually, actually makes those final details. And I, I think there's a strong purpose for keeping it generalized. The pandemic is a perfect example. Look how it changed how we worked. And originally, when we, with a pandemic, we thought, "Oh, my gosh, we're gonna lose this tax base, et cetera." But obviously, that has changed too. And again, just throughout, just watching, you know, developers come in, pitch ideas throughout all this time, we've seen some pretty creative things that we never thought, you know, that's, I guess, that's not my role is as a developer, but we thought, "Well, wait a second. If we make it too strict, is that going to, you know, be..."
Quash innovation.
Yes, exactly. And, yes.
Well, I guess, and maybe, let me clarify this. So, I'll give you a great compliment. I think the, the part in parks in here and how it outlines a plan for what we should try to improve and what it's going to cost and how long it could take, and, and that was really helpful. But when I look at the recommendations for what our roads and things are gonna be, I'm like, "Okay, so we're asking somebody to go spend fifty million dollars, we're gonna spend fifty million dollars to change our roads into parkways and have trees and separations and all these different things," which sound great until you start looking at, "Okay, which roads can we actually do that on? And which ones are gonna create a big hassle if we do?" I mean, we can't do it on Main Street in the historic district, but yet it kind of says, "We want to do this in Main Street in the historic district." And I'm like, "Oh, gosh, if we did that, if we put in the parkway concept with two travel lanes and separated bike lanes and a bus lane, I think we would have a riot in Kaysville, because nobody would get home on Main Street. They'd be stuck there for forty-five minutes trying to get three blocks." And so, that's where I'm struggling, that some of this doesn't feel achievable.
Yep, agreed.
And, and that's where I'm struggling. And it's my personality, I know, that when I build a plan, I want to know, "How am I gonna get to accomplish the plan?"
Yeah, I'll kind of address that. I've seen this in another community I worked in, because the, the council there was asking some of the questions. And one of the things that the planning commission there, they got too specific. They started putting in all the makes codes of what could be allowed in the zoning. And we, we went, we went back and said, "Whoa, we need to pull that out, because you don't want to start disallowing what types of businesses." But I think, to achieve it, sometimes you have to allow that innovation, because I don't, I think that public-private partnership comes into that, because you're gonna see eventually, like, development come in and allow that development of cities to come in, that's gonna fill those gaps. Because as a city, you probably don't have that capital. You know, let's talk about that. I mean, that tax revenue coming in, where you're allowing different zoning, like, I'll bring up mixed-use zoning as an example. Mixed-use zoning maximizes the potential for taxable value in a zone. And also, now, you look at the way you're innovating with your zoning and innovating with economic development that comes in with that. I think there's some ways, is, is things change because of COVID, volcanoes, and retail, and housing and demand. Adding that flexibility in your plan to get there in the future gives you that flexibility, because we don't know in five years what's gonna change with our zoning, with housing, with that middle housing that is needed to be able to fill that gap. So, this gives us that flexibility in that arena. We don't know what's gonna look like. Because I think sometimes, for me, I always look back for the housing and for those things that I needed and knew back in the past. I think we need to look forward for the housing we need for the future. And that's kind of the question I think we need to put forward. And if you get there, it's gonna take a public private partnership. And it's gonna take some capital that we, we haven't thought of in how to get there.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. No, absolutely. And like I say, it gives me a lot better, and I think some of it was, I think, my own mental struggle of trying to, first time I'm dealing with a general plan revision, I will admit that. And it wasn't what I expected, exactly. And like I say, it seemed to have different parts that had a different purpose. Some of them I could get totally, and others I'm like, struggling to understand.
And I'll, I'll point this out. I think the big thing for this one that I saw, that I, that really came forward, is I think we got really good public participation through the surveys that indicated what individuals in the city and what groups the city really wanted, that helped drive it. So, we have a better feel to guide future decision-making. And I think that was key, where we had a lot better polling and a better understanding of that. Where, where you don't have that understanding, it's harder to make that decision at the policy level. And that's been a good guide for, for at least the planning commission, I can't speak for the city council as a model. But for us to understand that, where that is, where things needed to go, we, I think we did some revisions based on that. And I, that really, moving forward, should help guide some policy decisions on how zoning and what comes in here and what doesn't, and, or how it does. And informs the decision-making going forward. You know, implementing policy, implementing, and implementing it forward is gonna be decided by the citizens. You know, we may represent that. But that really was indicative of what the feeling is now.
You, yeah, I mean, I think you make a great point, too, because ideally, the citizens came back and said, "We would like it to look hometown." Had, had the implementation or the restrictions on the road, there being a tree or being a median, been in place on two hundred, you know, when 200 North started to develop, then the planning commission probably at that time would have felt more comfortable saying, "Well, if you're going to build a building here, it's gotta have a tree here, or it's gotta have this." Whereas, right now, you may be feeling like, "Oh, we can't really tell people what to do or how to develop," you know.
But what, what would it look like? I mean, I, I think that's my question to, to those of you that are concerned about the vagueness. What, what would you want to see or not see in it?
No, I, I mean, I think I, like, where I agree with Andre, he's having, or he's saying... saying it's hard to envision going and changing all the roads. And, and I think you've answered, that's not what you're saying. You're just saying, ideally, it'd be great if all the roads looked like this, but now, as a planning commission and as a council, you can feel comfortable looking at someone and saying, our plan is to look like this. So if you're going to build something here, or you're going to do something, you've got to try and, you've got to follow the plan. And it doesn't look like we're picking on one person and not picking on another. You know, somebody that's coming in new now can't say, hey, well, you didn't make Joe Blow down the street put in trees and, and, you know, make sure there's overhead lighting and all these things. And you're like, well, that's because we adopted the plan.
But, but I do believe, I, I realize where you're coming from, Councilmember Lortz. There is that, that one beautiful picture, it shows, you know, it's a romanticized idea of what, you know, this should be. We actually de-emphasize it because we, we realize, you know, pragmatically, it couldn't happen. Not only that, but we also took into consideration traffic patterns. If you actually did that, then traffic's going to flow to the, the other side streets, and then, you know, you're going to get more upset citizens. So, yeah, we, we did de-emphasize it, but, yeah, please don't look at that as, yeah, this is what it should be, so.
Okay. Couple, couple of the, just following on what Councilmember Barber brought up earlier, there's a couple of other mismatches that we have of recent changes in city policy and ordinances that are not reflected in here. So we have an ADU ordinance now, but we, ADU, internal ADUs.
Internal, yeah.
And this still talks about it as though we don't have anything to address it. We, we have done the ramp tax, we talked about that. We just did a redevelopment zone amendment, which mismatches the maps we have in here as to where we want certain things to happen.
Yeah.
And I think we should align those together so that we don't have mixed messages. We have a mixed-use overlay that we have approved, and so I think we ought to probably talk about how that fits in here versus it kind of makes it sound like we should consider mixed use. Well, we have.
Yeah, you have. I think what this, or what this plan says, these are the areas where we should consider doing.
Well, the, the commentary, when you read through the whole justification about why to have mixed use, it sounds like we haven't done it.
Oh, right.
We don't have the ability to, but we'd like to do this in the future, and we should probably get an ordinance to do it. Well, we did.
Well, and it's, it's true. It's when we were-
We didn't have it when you started. Absolutely.
Now you've got the plans.
Yes, and, and so like I say, it's not a criticism.
You're welcome.
You guys are waiting.
Thank you.
You know, and I, I just have a, you know, Shane asked me the other, her city manager asked me the other day, he said, do you like the general plan we have now? And I said, yeah, I do. I actually like it. It is general, but it's too general. And I, I, and I was telling Sam, I'm talking to Sam, I read, I read through this whole thing, and the, the data is fantastic. It is, it is great data. But I want a plan that is user-friendly. I want something that people will look at and use and won't get inundated with data. And so they put it down, and they don't read it, and they don't look at it. And so I'm hoping, but as I told Sam, to get to where he got today with that, he had to have that data. That data is so important, and as I read it, you can learn a lot from it, but I know people are not going to sit and read 167 pages and pick out. So the executive summary to me was really good, and I think we can build on the executive summary and make a plan that is general, but what we're looking for, but yet point to the data and say, but the, how we came to this was this data. I mean, there's a lot of things in here about loans and government assistance, and I don't think that needs to be in your general plan. If somebody needs it and it's, it changes all the time, they'll, it's, they'll go look for it and it'll be available. I don't know that it needs to be in there. I'm a little nervous about putting costs in a general plan. I mean, if you really looked at it, there's a couple, there's one example where you would say, commercial property in Davis County is about $3 a square foot, in Kaysville City it's $17 a square foot. I don't think that's what we want to say in a general plan. The data is fantastic, but I want it to be general. I want it to be something that somebody will pick up and won't get inundated in the first couple of chapters with things. In the second chapter, I, I don't know how many times I read Main Street and 200 North, Main Street and 200 North, in reference kind of what it said in a paragraph or two before, but it needed to be there. And if I was really interested in that portion of it, I would go to the data where it came from. But I think there's a way to condense that and make the general plan so, more general, and when it really gets specific to what you're interested in, it lends you to that data that we collected. And I know there's, I think there's a way to do that by possibly creating a bigger executive summary and actually adopting that as the general plan. And then, like we did with the one we have now, it's a 10-page document that references the transportation. And you look at that, that's a 67-page document or so. So that, I think that's where, and, and I, and I'll put my two cents in for the mayor, we kind of discussed this, and she can deny or agree or say whatever, but we kind of felt like this was started with the last council and planning commission, is kind of go through the process with this council and planning commission. And I would really love to see the new council and planning commission read it, get familiar with it, and adopt it as early as possible because they're the ones that are going to be enforcing it. And, and that would kind of be my recommendation, and I think somehow simplify the document to where people will read it, be interested in it. When they get to that point, they're interested nowhere to go get the data. If there's a way to do that, maybe there's not. I don't know.
Councilmember Blackham, we talked about this a little bit here beforehand, before the meeting. One of the things that I found over the last several years of my career was just what you were talking about, is that this is not unusual to have a plan this size for a community, but like you say, people don't read it. That's not what they're looking for. That's not where they spend their time. And what we found and what we started doing in other places where I was, was we put together a really brief summary. I called it a pamphlet. It's actually a little more than that, but it's not much more than really just kind of a pamphlet that summarizes all of the major points. And that's what most people pick up and read, and that's what they want. Now, if they want more detail than that, more information, then they can go dig for it. And, you know, they know where the documents are. We tell them they're online, they're wherever. They can find the documents and get the, the information, the background, and the data that they want. But that summary, that pamphlet, so to speak, is really what most people want to look at and say, oh, I get it. Now this is what you're planning for our community. And, and, and that kind of seems to be the thing that most people will use.
I was in the car industry for the majority of my professional career up till five years ago, and initially, when we would sell cars, we'd give them an owner's manual. And there were some people that I would have, would come in and they would have tabs on their owner's manual, and they'd gone through and read the entire owner's manual. Most people didn't, though. And so about six years into selling cars, Accure started coming out with a quick start guide. And it was just teeny, teeny, tiny, like you were saying, and it just hit on the things like, where's your gas? What octane should you put in? All the questions that most people ask. And I think I told you this at that open house. So I, actually, I think I was the person who came up with the executive summary, right? Was the reason that you did it.
Sure.
Yes, you were. Thank you, John. That was the best adjustment ever. Whoever thought of that.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Actually, I think, you know, to get back to what the purpose of the-
Can you move to the microphone?
Okay.
There you go. Perfect.
To get back to what the purpose of the general plan is, ultimately, the plan is for you and the planning commission and the staff. That's like who the plan is really for, right? But, as Councilman Blackham's pointed out, it's really important that the public understands why you're doing what you're doing, right? Why are you making these decisions? Where is that decision coming from, right? So I think that the larger document as a general plan is, is very good for its purpose, right? Because it, it does give the detail needed to the, the government of the city to be able to enact policy and do things. And so that when they, you know, are confronted with, we need to reconstruct this road, what does it look like? It should look like this, and we start from there.
I feel like, and it gives ideas. That's like the really great thing. It's-
Exactly.
Jog your ideas. So I don't think it hurts. And what I was going to say when Wolf was talking, other cities I was looking at, they had a cool, I don't know if this is possible, but they had a cool interactive website with theirs, and they click on one area with your executive summary, and then you go to another place that has a lot more detail, and you collapse that, and you can look at the thing. And I don't, I'm not recommending, especially because I won't be here, I'm not recommending how it gets implemented. But I think you give people like layers of consumption.
Depth, yeah.
And if I'm really interested in, I'm like redoing my house, or I'm developing something, like, I'm going to be interested. I'm going to drill down all the way, and, and I'll see what it is. I don't think it, I don't think it hurts to have all this, especially where we've gone to the expense and time of putting it together. And I can say that, and I, and I'll come and say that as a resident in a couple of weeks. But I think it's a great, I think it is helpful, and the data is good. And, you know, maybe taking out some of the, the financial part, I, I don't think that's a problem at all. But I, I, I think the depth is great. If anything, I would probably just make the executive summary just as accessible as possible to people. And maybe like some of those, like the visuals from the actual plan are really good, maybe kind of put those interjected in the executive summaries so they get that idea, just an idea. But I think it's, I think there's, there's such good stuff to it, and it's, I, I believe in the elected bodies to do their job. I, I believe that they'll, they'll look at things individually, just like we always have, even with a very general plan, so.
And if I might offer a suggestion, and the mayor can take this or leave this, but perhaps what would be in keeping with the sentiment here is perhaps take one section per work session for the next councils, and just go through each of them. Yeah. And make sure that you understand them, you're okay with them, you're comfortable with them, work on it again some more. You can invite the, the planning commission back and, and to help and clarify. And then, you know, it'll be one segment of your agenda for a couple of months. But-
It's important enough.
It's a good idea.
It's important, and also, it also gives citizens another opportunity yet again. There will be no, uh, nobody can say that this was railroaded through. There's no way. So, and if this is supposed to be representative of, of the community, I think that, you know, you take the time.
I agree. That's a great suggestion. I was going to say thank you to everybody for all of the work. So as a planning commissioner, I got to be a part of this, and it was fantastic. And on council, a part of it. I agree with Andre. I think we should go through that implementation, you know, for each section, like the mayor just said, and we should go through it. But I don't think we should take forever. I think we should get it done. And it, and I like Mike's idea of involving the new council.
Yeah.
And having them have the opportunity to look at it as well and understand it.
The one thing that COVID did for this that I really missed was the interaction that we are having right now. I felt like we just never had the opportunity to really have that very much. And I would absolutely love the opportunity to have work sessions with the planning commission and talk about this because I think it's that important. And, and that's why I say, I'm not, I'm not one to want to rush this because it's a, it's a really important document, I think, for Kaysville. And it's, you know, it, it's worth the money we paid. I, I think it is, just to have the data that we got, because I don't know how else we would have gotten it. And, and to have these guys put it together, obviously no one person in Kaysville City could have ever done that, you know? That's why we hire consultants to do things that we can't do. And to have their expertise and come in, and then give us the opportunity to say, okay, thank you, now we need to look at it and make it ours. And we're going to work together. And I, and I look forward to that interaction and some, maybe some work sessions with the planning commission because I, I, I value that back and forth debate.
So Mayor, what, what would be best right now?
Are you ready for an action?
Do you want?
I think probably what a motion would be, would be something to the-
Table?
To move it to-
I would say move it to-
Yeah, I would make a motion that we move it to a work item.
Right.
And continue to work through the, the executive summary to make sure that we're good with all the implementation measures and recommendations, and it'll probably fall into the new, new council to finish this.
But don't take that as a slight.
Yeah, no, we, we appreciate all of the-
I'm so sorry. I know this has taken a long time. I'm so sorry.
You're, you're going to get paid, or-
[laughing]
We're not, probably more.
Yeah, probably more. But it's an important thing.
Does that hurt us to keep, to delay it only if we, only if-
Yes.
Financially.
I mean, things keep, like, cost money.
But it's good. I mean, make sure that everyone understands what we're doing. And it's our governing document, so we need to really-
Another-
Planning has had it for a while, and now it's our-
Another option that you could have is have a Saturday work session.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just go through it.
Just bust it out.
Do like a budget thing.
I can tell you this, too. I mean, our consultants have done all of the real, you know, me work on all of this.
Data gathering.
Planning commission has reviewed this now. I think, you know, we have a pretty good handle on a lot of this. I think the planning commission can discuss this with the council pretty good. We can certainly have our consultants as kind of a backup on this, and if there are things that we need to get more clarification on or something, we could have to involve them. But, but I think the planning commission can do a lot of this with you.
I agree.
And, and I-
And staff.
I agree. And, and another thing that's coming up is we are hiring a new community development director, and it might be beneficial-
Great to have him involved.
Right.
To, to have that new person in the room with the planning commission and the city council people on a Saturday work session perhaps, and just be able to go through it. And so that new person has an idea of what, what the new general plan says. So, anyway, having said that, yes?
Right with our mouth taped shut, as I was just, with duct tape.
Got it. Not, hey, you know, we should do, it's like, wrap that, let's start over.
Right, bad idea. Don't do that.
Don't, do not do that.
I think a Saturday thing is a good idea.
I don't think they give the support for that.
Granted, it's not my Saturday, so I can say that, but-
Someone else's Saturday, yeah. But-
It would just-
Maybe you have some emotion.
In the mode.
Said that, does that change your motion?
Well, again, it's just, it's going to move it to a work item that-
Not to say move it to a work item at a later date.
Yeah, it doesn't matter how we schedule to work on it.
Okay.
You said move it to a work item at a later date, right?
Just say, yeah, just say a later date.
I second that.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Lortz and seconded by Councilmember Blackham. Any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
It's, it's been, it's a great product.
And-
We're just divided at this point.
Yeah, exactly, right. Right, exactly.
And I, we knew, so we started off four years ago-
Yeah.
-working on the strategic plan, which set the groundwork to be able to do the general plan. And, you know, I, I remember talking to many of you about, okay, we've got to assemble the dream team.
Yes.
And to, to be able to do this heavy lifting, which the planning commission has done.
Yes.
And you have lived up to my expectations.
Thank you.
And we really appreciate-
Yes, thank you.
-all the time and effort that has gone into this, so.
This will serve a really long time. This will, this will be so beneficial.
Maybe we could have a Sunday reading where you read it too.
Turn his mic off, would you?
Some plug in.
Anyway.
We get grapes and-
We better vote, Mayor, hurry. Vote, vote.
All right. Now, let's go to a vote. Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion is unanimous. Looking forward to hearing more about that later.
And thank you, planning commission.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for all being here.
You guys take it very seriously. Thank you.
Yes. All right. Next, we are going on to a resolution amending 3.16 of the Kaysville City Personnel Rules and Regulations Regarding the City's Paid Holidays. Shane?
Thanks, Mayor. The direction from the last council was to address this idea with, with some of our staff, which I think we've done. We addressed it as an executive team with the department heads, as well as took it to the employee morale committee. I think the general consensus was, not, it wasn't even, I mean, I was joking about just adding the holiday, and that's probably what many people would like to see, but there are a lot of people that, that even believe that closing the city office one more day isn't, isn't also all it's cracked up to be, as much as everybody likes time off. So that was even some feedback we received. But generally, I think the, the holiday in, taking the meaning of the holidays out of it, I think having a holiday in October was more preferable to most of the staff than having a holiday in June. And I think some of you reflected that in your comments from, from the previous meeting. There was, there was a great deal of, of those that, that did like the idea of us leading out in this regard and honoring what Juneteenth is about, in, in- out in this regard and honoring what Juneteenth is about, in, in having an inclusive staff. And it is meaningful to many people. We have one of our, those, one of our employees that serves on the employee morale committee has been celebrating Juneteenth for eight years and has some nephews and nieces that are African-American. And, and I was blown away by that. I didn't, in my naivete, did not even know what Juneteenth was even three, four years ago. So thought that was very interesting. One suggestion came out of the employee morale committee was there are ways that we can support and honor Juneteenth as, as an important day without having to take a day off and having to make it something that the employees are just not working in. So if you're asking for a general consensus and for maybe a recommendation, I think what we would probably like to do is just leave the holidays as is and simply make, make a concerted effort to, to highlight that day as, as a, as a city and, and make sure our staff know that that's important to us.
Thank you. All right. We don't have anybody signed up to speak to this item, so we'll go to questions from council. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we keep the holidays as, as they are currently.
So do not adopt the resolution, to not adopt.
To not adopt.
Right.
Either resolution. There was one in there just to add the holiday.
Just nothing.
And there was one just to swap them and just to.
It's just nothing, yeah.
Just keep it the same is all we need to do.
To adopt, to keep the resolution, resolution the same.
To not adopt, not amend the resolution. No amendments to the resolution.
No resolution.
There's two resolutions in your packet. One is to.
We're going to deny both resolutions.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll make the motion.
Or keep it the same is just fine.
To just keep it the same.
There you go.
But, but to celebrate as a city and make, you know, maybe even ask that employee if there's a way that he could recommend or he or she could recommend to us ways that we can.
That's a good idea.
Show our support by, you know, whatever it is, hanging banners, doing a week full of this or whatever it is to celebrate it.
Absolutely, great.
Good idea.
Someone second that.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by council member Adams and seconded by council member Barber. Any comments?
I'll just make a comment real quick. At, at our employ, we've actually had a little presentation for the last three or four years on Juneteenth. And it's been very beneficial to make sure people are educated, to understand what does it mean and what is it about. And then we talk about our inclusive policies and how we try to make sure that we welcome everyone of all different origins and ethnicities and religions and try to accept the differences within society.
That's awesome.
Love it.
Okay. All right. Let's go to a vote. Council member Tran.
Aye.
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 Motion is unanimous. Thank you. A resolution appointing a representative to serve on the Great Salt Lake scenic byway committee. And Shane?
Sure. I think this one's pretty straightforward. I think we had some, if not consensus unanimity at the last meeting about just appointing Mayor Witt to serve on this committee.
Good. Okay. We do not have anybody signed up to speak to this, so we'll, we'll go straight to questions from council. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion at this time. I'll make a motion that we approve action item C, a resolution appointing a representative to serve on the Great Salt Lake scenic byway committee. Do I have to mention who it is? Okay.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by council member Tran, seconded by council member Lorts. Any comments? All right, let's go to a vote. Council member Lorts.
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion is unanimous. Thank you, I think.
Look at you.
Let us know.
I'm taking one for the team. You'll love it. You'll be good.
All right. Next, an ordinance amending Title IX, public works of the Kaysville city code regarding streets, stormwater and water. Josh?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. Nobody gave me instructions to be brief, so.
Rewind the tape, rewind the tape.
Read it. Yeah. Yeah.
Somebody give him the general plan so he can read it to us.
In 1850. No, we received some good feedback in the last council meeting as a work item regarding the excavation permit. Made some clarifications there that I, that I think are pretty helpful. Other than that, what you have before you is similar or is the same as what we presented last time, so.
Okay, thank you. We do not have anybody signed up to speak to this, so we'll go to questions from council. Any questions from council? All right, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion that we approve action item 5D, an ordinance amending Title IX, public works of the Kaysville city code regarding streets, stormwater and water.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by council member Blackham, seconded by council member Adams. Any comments? All right, we'll go to a vote. Council member Barber.
Aye.
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 Motion is unanimous. Thank you. An ordinance amending Title IV of Kaysville city code by the addition of chapter 10, providing for the imposition of a recreation arts museum and parks ramp tax.
That's mine, mayor. Mayor, remember the seat council, this is a pretty straightforward ordinance. The citizenry obviously passed the initiative to have a ramp tax. This is kind of the last step. The city just needs to adopt an ordinance that authorizes the city to collect this tax, and that's what this does. Miss, I've spoken with Mr. Story about this and he's in contact with the state tax commission. They need a copy of it before they can begin that process.
Okay, thank you. We don't have anybody signed up to speak to this item, but, so we'll go straight to questions from council. Any questions? Okay, let's go, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending Title IV of the Kaysville city code by the addition of chapter 10, providing for the imposition of a recreation arts museum and parks ramp tax.
Second.
It's been moved by council member Barber, seconded by council member Tran. Any comments?
I have a question.
I have a comment as well.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, the only question I have is when do we see the money?
Yep. Does it, does it go to the next fiscal year? Does it, do you know that answer?
Well, you start collecting it in April and then you won't.
So we don't realize it until.
So will we be able to include it?
It takes a while.
Will we be able to include it in the 2023 budget?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
And, and on that, I just had a comment. And I won't read the entire thing, but just as a way of reminding to this body, the citizens committee made a lot of recommendations about this before it was put on the ballot. And one of them was that if passed, it's further recommended that an independent citizen committee ramp committee be formed with balanced representation from the four ramp disciplines and whose members also fairly represent a cross-section of the city geography. And so just a recommendation for future using those funds, at least some, some point of citizen input be looked at. And thankfully, we already have really great data to set, set forth that. Very excited for good things to come.
Excellent. All right. Let's go to a vote. Council member Blackham.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay.
It'd be way fun.
Okay. Next, we're going to work items, discussion regarding parking in Davis High School. Shane?
Mayor, thank you. If it's okay, I'll kick this off and we'd like to hear from Chief Olberg as well. I hope you had a chance to read my executive summary. I don't want to go into all the detail there, just in an opening statement here. But we had some residents that requested some additional no parking signs in front of their home, which led us to have a nice conversation with some key staff members. The mayor was there and Principal Wilkie. And at the end of that meeting, we really felt like we wanted to come back here and recommend that we do away with the no parking signs altogether. While I feel this is largely an administrative issue, the council took action on this three years ago and, and we're happy to take whatever direction you're going to give us tonight. But what we're looking for is just some direction. And that is our recommendation to, to remove the no parking signs. And I made some comments in there. I hope that, like I said, I hope you read them. We can talk about whatever questions you might have tonight. But after three years, we feel like it hasn't worked very well, hasn't done really what we, we hoped it would do. And we believe that adding any additional no parking signs is simply going to exacerbate the, the problem, make it worse, or just move it to different, different places. And we feel like that was a, a general consensus among those that were, were in this little meeting. Chief, do you have anything to add there?
I, I do. I got some questions.
I have a question.
I got a couple.
All right.
So I got a, you know, I had, I was around when this was implemented and whatnot. And, and I kind of almost feel like the fact that you haven't had the violations, to me means it's working. And, and I know, I don't live there. I'm not one that lives over there. I'm one of those people I think would be very frustrated if somebody was parking in front of my house every single day, that there was school. And I know people are like water, they'll take the path of least resistance. And if they can park on Third East or whatever, and it's closer to get to the school than going to the south parking lot, they will. But I'm kind of of the opinion that it's working. The fact that you're not having to give out the violations because people are actually reading the signs and not parking there unless they have a pass.
Well, I guess it depends on what we want to call working. We, we don't issue a lot of citations, but we spend a lot of time on the issue.
Patrolling, yeah.
Our, our SRO at Davis High spends a lot of his time going out, looking at the streets, running a car's license plate, comparing it to school notes, seeing if it is a student. Because we do oftentimes will cite somebody who's just visiting their, a resident, and that's frustrating for the resident. You know, we don't have a lot of them buying the permits as, as it was designed. And then they end up coming in, spending their time to come in to complain or contest the ticket or pay it or whatever. And we generally dismiss those tickets. That's an administrative thing set up over here at city hall to, to handle. So it's working in a sense, but it, we are spending a lot of time on the whole, the whole program, the processes. And I, I get what you're saying a hundred percent, and I may be one of those people too. But there's also the other side of the coin that I have a hard time defending to the public when they call up and say, well, why can't my son and daughter park there? I pay the same taxes as, as these people. And I don't like it when people park in front of my street or in front of my house, and my neighbors do, but you guys won't do anything about that. And, you know, we have issues at, down at these homes around the theater. It's a, it's a similar kind of issue that those homes face with the theater parking. And we've just kind of focused on this one issue as a city. And the parking ordinance was put in long before I got here, but it was, it was addressed by the council, I think, three or four years ago, four years ago.
It was prior to us.
It's prior to us it is put in, but then we, two years ago, a little over two years ago, we, we just renewed it. I think it was just the formality of renewing it.
At that time, we tweaked it because there were a lot of inequity. So one street that was closer to the high school.
Yeah.
Didn't have signs and some streets farther away and the signs were dilapidated. And some of the signs were on actual Davis High School property that really shouldn't have ever been put there in the first place. And, and it was, there wasn't a lot of equity there. And so we, we changed it and we came up with this other program with the intent to try it. And at that time too, that was prior to Farmington High School being built. We do have much fewer cars or students at the, at the high school, Davis High School now than we did at that time. And I'm not saying that taking out signs is, is the, you know, perfect solution. I don't think there is a perfect solution to this particular problem.
Right.
But it, it's my opinion, and that's all it is, is that the best solution is to remove the signs. At the time, we did make this change, the, the council spoke a lot about, well, in Bountiful, they do this and this and this. And that was taken as the, kind of the blueprint for this. And at the same time, Bountiful was watching what we were doing, hoping we were going to get rid of the signs. And in fact, they've done that since then. It just would have been easier then for them to do it if, if we had done it. But they've since removed their signs. And, you know, what, one issue that they faced and one issue that they put the signs in in the first place in Bountiful was people complaining, well, there's a, the students parked their car in my driveway, so I can't easily get in and out. Or they litter in my yard. And so what they were trying to do was essentially remove the student from the neighborhood. But the, the real solution would be, well, let's, let's enforce the existing laws. If there's a car parked in front of your driveway, let's tow the car. If there's a littering problem, let's, let's address the littering problem. Let's address the problems that, that are there instead of trying to come up with a,
New rules.
A, a solution that will just, you know, remove the actual person. Because as our city manager alluded to, I think what we're doing when we add to our streets is we're just making the problem geographically larger. And Davis High School doesn't want to see that. I don't want to see that. I, the one opinion or concern I voiced when we changed this in the first place was that I don't want to see us pushing students across Main Street because that's a busy, very busy street. And if you, if you come out in front of the high school right now and watch students try to cross, even on a light, you get a lot of cars that don't yield to them as, as it is right now. And I, I would hate to see us keep adding streets and keep pushing this problem to affect more and more neighborhoods, more and more streets, more and more residents. And that, as we make it geographically bigger, that makes it more challenging to, for us to try to deal with. It gives us more streets and more houses for our, our SRO to go out and try to keep track of. But that's just my, my perspective.
Right.
On some of this.
I will, I'll just interject at this point that this is my neighborhood. These are the people from my congregation who are primarily affected. I did reach out to, to individuals who were very involved previously, let them know that we would be discussing this tonight. One individual said, well, if they're not going to enforce the sign, so they might as well not be there. they might as well not be there. That was their comment. And another individual felt very strongly that they should stay. However, I do not see those individuals here this evening. Um, so, uh, I'm just gonna make, uh, I think it makes sense for this to be an administrative decision. I, honestly, I don't want any council to ever have to deal with that problem ever again. I, I, it, it becomes so emotionally charged that, um, I think it would be better handled, uh, outside of city council. Um, and it could be at some point that, that it's, makes sense to have signs. Uh, and I want to empower staff to be able to respond appropriately at that time. But, it would be my recommendation that we just empower our administration to make that decision. So, that, that's my comment. Uh, council member, Barbara, you-
My question was just, and Nick is walking away, but just the legality of telling people they can't park on a street. I've always wondered, and maybe Chief, you can answer that, or Nick, run as fast as you can. I just, it's always struck me wrong that we're telling people they can't park on a public street, or, or specific people. Like, I could go park there, but a high school student can.
No, it's, it's not. I, I think it's, you need a pa- like, at least in, in Salt Lake, my parents' house on First South, it's from this time to this time, if you don't have a guest pass or-
You just can't park there at all?
You can't park there. And all of the avenues-
But did we follow all that?
Because of the University of Utah.
It doesn't really matter at this point, but-
It, it is legal to do what we're doing.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, it, I guess it's just, is it wise?
It's just hard to enforce it.
Yeah. It's just so hard. That's why it just, anyway. It's always felt-
Cumbering.
Very murky and, anyway.
Yeah.
A big deal.
Chief, I have a question. So, if we don't have, uh, no parking signs on, in these areas, and, so in someone parks in front of your house, there's nothing that will be done unless they're parked in front of your driveway, right? At which point, they could be towed?
Correct.
Is that, okay.
Or unless they're parked, you know, a close, too close to a stop sign.
Okay, so they're breaking another type of rule. Okay.
Some other ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
Um, but, um, when, when the council, prior council revisited this, this was, that was something that was brought up as a concern by, uh-
Right.
-members of the public is, you know, back whenever, you know, they, they parked in my driveway and I couldn't leave.
Yeah.
And that has also been an issue down around the theater at times. And our response to that is we show up and we try to find the person. If we can't find them, then we tow the vehicle.
Okay. Okay.
It, it still is incredibly annoying to have somebody parked in front of your driveway and you can't leave.
It is, yeah. But-
You guys can enforce that just like you do.
They certainly stop that.
I was gonna say, they'll, they'll still enforce that. I mean, you guys will be right on it if somebody calls, yeah.
Not, not only enforce it, but Chief Olberg has, has committed to me, I think it was in writing, it was an email, I can't remember, but, that he would be extra aggressive, like, like we would be very-
No warnings.
Proactive about that, especially in that neighborhood as a, as a result of this. Cause, yeah, we don't want that to happen.
Yeah, we try to be as, as sensitive as we can to, to their issues. It's quality of life issue. Um, you know, if you live in, just like, uh, the conversations I've had with Councilwoman Barber about, uh, residents live on 200 North. There's a lot of issues with, uh, traffic flow and we try to be as sensitive as we can to their problems. Their problems are different than, than, uh, another part of the city. Uh, but they're all quality of life issues and, and we can't solve them, but we can certainly try to, to, uh, help where we can and, uh, be, be as responsive as we can to those issues.
Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe just one other thing to add. From the Bountiful PD had said that it has, it, it was, uh, upsetting at the beginning, but it's gone well because, and one of the reasons I thought that he mentioned it had gone well was because they had been very aggressive with that, uh, towing effort and, and making sure people followed the laws.
Yeah, they, they tried to do a lot of advertising about, "This is the change. We're not gonna make the change in the middle of the school year." They spent the summer trying to, to have a conversation with, with some of the residents. Hey, if you have this, you know, if you have a car parked in front of your, your driveway and you can't leave, here's the number to call. Let us know so we can respond instead of, you know, uh, calling City Hall or calling a tow truck driver yourself. And try to give them some, some solutions to their concerns before it was actually implemented the following, when the following school year started. And then just try to be as, as spot on we, as we could with those, uh, complaints and those issues and, and try to preemptively, uh, deal with them in, in the schools also, uh, through, through whatever messaging Davis High School can, can help us with.
So, it really wouldn't, I mean, it's, I know it's a work item, but it wouldn't happen until the, this following, this school year, this fall?
That, that was-
Is that kind of what would maybe happen in terms of timeline?
Kind of what I discussed with the city manager.
Yeah, for, for sure, that's what I would suggest. And, and, and it, it really doesn't even need to be anything but a work item if, if, I, I mean, again, I, I believe this is quite administrative and you can do whatever you want. You can move it to action and change it any way you'd like and, and we'll follow that direction. But, I believe that if we, if you left this in the capable hands of, of Chief Olberg, we, we would do this in the summer and, uh, we would just, uh, advertise, do all those, those things without, um, you know, trusting him to do it.
Can I, well, can I make a comment?
Yes, of course.
As a work item?
Yeah.
I, I mean, growing up on First South, and a lot of these homes are similar to what our home was, we had a single driveway that went up the side of our house. We didn't have a spot where you could pull in and, you know, park to the side. It was just sing- so there was typically, you know, five teenagers and my parents and we had the four cars. And if you wanted to park in the driveway, it was like, "Ooh, someone has," you know, and oftentimes you drove over the lawn. But, the problem there was that people that were going to the University of Utah would park on First South first thing in the morning and their cars would be there until they were done with school. And so, we couldn't park in front of our house. And I wonder, a lot of the homes around Davis High are similar where there's just a single driveway. I wonder how, I mean, I'd have to go back and look at the minutes, but I wonder how many of these people, their complaint was more, "I can't park in front of my house or, with my other car. And we have to play this game where we're moving them back and forth." And so, I think that's the reason that Salt Lake and everywhere surrounding the University of Utah put in those permits, that you have to have a permit to park there during the day. Um, I just think it's worth at least considering talking to the neighbors if that's the issue, because I think if that's the issue, then it is kinda unfair that we're just saying, "Hey, too bad, you know, you can't park in front of your house. You gotta pull across the street and walk across the street to get your car."
I remember seeing this in Planning Commission, uh, four years ago or something. And I think the biggest complaint was that people were jumping their fences, walking through their yards, that the kids were doing that kinda thing.
So, it wasn't so much that they felt like they were restricted on being able to park their second vehicle in front of their house?
I think that people were frustrated they couldn't maybe park in front of their house, but I think it was just the traffic. More than anything, they just felt like, at least a couple of years ago, there were just too many cars in their neighborhood.
Correct.
And it was irritating. And the kids were running through their yards and leaving their stuff and-
And, and, um, if I can, uh, I was not on council at that time, but I watched the conversation. And there are people who have home-based businesses, um, who would have clients show up and have nowhere to park. Um, so that, that was an issue. Um, and, uh, so, uh-
Definitely-
Along with what you-
You know, and I, I, I think this definitely, the school has its, lends a, a different aspect to this. Cause normally in a subdivision in a neighborhood, you have your single-family dwellings or whatever, or we have parking created for multifamily. This, I believe, lends a completely different situation. I think because they don't have adequate parking or for whatever reasons they do. I mean, realistically, in my neighborhood, your neighborhood, generally, we don't have a lot of people coming in from outside and parking in front of our houses. They do. I understand where they're frustrated. I, I think the city tried to help them out by doing that. And since it's happened, I really don't have any complaints. Uh, I, I don't know if you heard the complaints. I think people have liked it. I understand your frustration, but there are certain times that we are, um, reactive instead of, um, you know, we're more re, more, uh, reactive to complaints for certain things rather than proactive. And so, I, I don't know. I, I just, I, I, I don't live there. I've, but I can see their frustration and just like John, where he was growing up, couldn't park in front of his own house. And I, I think that would be frustrating on a day-to-day basis.
I know that, so when our kids went to Davis High, it was frustrating that the school would only give out a limited number of parking passes. I don't know if they've increased that number or not.
No, they still do that.
But, but that's part of the problem. I mean, they would only give a, so-
There's only so many parking stalls at the school.
Well, I know, but, but still, if a student didn't even have a spot, say they're, they got there early, they couldn't still park in the parking spot. So, I don't know if the school's fixed that at all or done anything towards that, but that, they could help.
The principal addressed that a little bit in our meeting. And, and, uh, actually, the SRO over there said that there are parking spots available in the parking lot.
On the parking lot, okay.
Yeah. And, and, uh, because, and there weren't four years ago because of the situation with the number of students there. But since Farmington High has opened and many cars go that direction instead of this direction, that, uh, is not the case anymore. There are more parking spots available. What they see more of is, uh, they have a parking spot, but maybe it's assigned on the other side, on the south side, but their classes are on the north side. So, they would prefer to park on the street closer to their classes. Or, if I'm understanding that correctly.
So, currently, do the neighbor, the, the people who live in the, they have a pass that they can put a sticker on their car? And then do they have like two guest passes that they can-
They were having to pay for that.
They have to pay for that.
They can purchase a pass from, at City Hall.
Yeah.
So, I, I can't remember if we had to purchase those or not when they implemented this in Salt Lake. But, I mean, granted, it was a pain. Like, I got a couple of tickets because I went to visit my parents. I didn't run in, get the guest pass going. You forget, it's on your dashboard. All those things happen. But-
We have had complaints about the passes too. Just not forget that.
Yeah.
People that have to come and get their passes are, are also angry.
Oh, it's a, it's, it was a pain, but at the same time, it was like, uh, you know, you talk to my mom, she, "Oh, it's so nice to be able to just pull up and park in front of the house and not have to pull in front and park in the driveway in back of my dad and then have to, he, I have to, hey, can you move the car?" You know?
Do the dance.
So, I don't know which is the better evil to have, but I would say, don't be hasty in changing this. Cause, cause I have a lot of upset neighbors.
Would-
Well, but, I mean, they're, they're, they're waiting till the fall is their recommendation.
Yeah. Well, what do you think about the idea of just empowering staff to manage it?
Yeah.
I think at this point, staff would choose to just completely remove it. And I don't think that's where we're headed.
All right. I haven't heard much from Andre.
Everyone likes privilege and they love the easiest option available. So, I mean, the same reason why a resident wants to be able to park in front of their house is why a student wants to park in front of their house.
Yeah.
It's convenient. And, uh, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's a dilemma. I don't know that as a city council, we should be trying to set neighborhood-specific ordinances on every single street about who can park where and who can't park where. I think that's a nightmare. Uh, I believe it as an administrative action for staff.
Do you wanna, I would make a motion, but I don't know if a motion is needed on a work item. So-
Not, not needed. You can, well, actually, there's not a whole lot of, uh, I, I'm not hearing a-
Yeah.
Do city councils ever, Nick, do city councils typically get involved in these types of, I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out if in Salt Lake, if a city council came together and decided to do this on First South, or if it was put together by staff?
I, I don't know for sure, obviously, in Salt Lake.
Right.
It is a very administrative decision. And the reason that city manager and Chief Olberg decided to bring this back is because city council made the decision in the first place. But this is a very, very administrative decision. This is the same as where Mr. Belnap would paint red curbs for, and how far it would extend past fire hydrants, um, where he would place stop signs. I mean, all, all that is traffic control, which this is. And, um, so yeah, it's a, it's a very administrative decision. I would be very, very surprised if Salt Lake City ran the permit program and its expansion and contraction and through the city council at all.
I, I, I tend to agree. I mean, I think that, like, but, as, you know, just because it's here and it's on a work item, I would give high recommendation that we don't be too hasty. We talk to the neighbors, make sure that we have a full and, I mean, you don't have to do that, obviously, because I think-
I kinda got the impression that if this was like a work, uh, an action item, we'd probably have a full, um, audience here. If the word got out.
Well-
But the question is, Mike, do you think that it is a, it is-
I wish it never would've went to the council in the beginning.
Agreed.
But it did.
That's the thing, is the residents could-
But the problem is it did.
The residents could reach out to Chief Olberg, they can reach out to Shane, they could reach out to Nick, they can still go through the same process, they're just gonna skip us.
Well, we can still recommend that they, you can send a letter out to the neighborhood to say, "Hey, we're, we're looking to change this."
At the very least, I think you should say-
Clear, clear in the fall. It's not, it's not happening next week.
We'll definitely do that in the dark of night. We'll do it in the summer when it's gonna be at least impactful, but we're still gonna notify everybody for sure.
Yeah. So, that would be, just to be clear, speaking for myself only, my recommendation is that we turn this over to staff to execute as they see fit and work with residents and listen to them. It's not really even a motion though. So, I think just speak your piece. I spoke mine, you spoke-
Oh, I'd just say, recommend to staff that they consider having some type of letter with an open house to at least hear if people's concerns are businesses or if people's concerns are playing the shuffle or, you know, different things like that. And how you can tell them, "This is how we're gonna help mitigate that. We're gonna really enforce towing cars. We're gonna do things." So, do you have them all in the same room at the same time? You can kinda-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do it nicely.
Okay, so, is that the general consensus of this group?
I agree with that.
I think it gives the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak their piece.
Yeah, they can come talk to-
Gives them the opportunity.
Yep.
And then, you know, they can maybe sway you.
Yeah. Hmm. And you'll listen to them. You guys are great. I mean, you'll do a great job. Yeah.
Maybe only Teslas can park on-
Wow.
Okay. That's a joke.
The oldest truck I could find when I went to high school.
All right, well, first of all, thank you to, to Chief and Shane and our, um, Officer Kittle as the SRO over there. Thank, thank them for their work on this and, um, appreciate, uh, what you do for us. So, thanks.
Is there a, uh, call to the public about this man's, uh, mustache?
I might.
I've got something to say there.
I would like, the floor is yours, Chief. Go for it.
Isn't it the lip tough underneath?
Okay.
Disturbance of public, like, what's the ca- what's the call sign for?
Isn't there, didn't we just approve an ordinance? Yeah, disorderly conduct, yeah.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
Moving on.
Thank you. All right. Now, we're going to call to the public. I didn't have anybody signed up, so I'm just gonna start calling people up.
Yeah.
Public, you're-
I, I'm gonna start calling some people up to speak. And I think there's a barber contingent that might wanna say something to their mom.
Or saying something or-
Yeah.
Yeah. Come on.
Would anybody-
This is your time.
Anyone?
You can complain about how long the meeting was.
Come on forward.
All right, let's see it.
You gonna rap?
You guys are awesome.
There we go.
They are awesome.
Thank you.
I think that we should go home and get ice cream.
The whole, all of us?
Yeah, sure. That works.
Ice cream?
Good job.
Oh, oh. Say, second, I second the motion.
And also, could you state your name for the record?
That-
I'm Jenna Barber.
Thank you.
We, we truly appreciate the time that you have allowed your mother-
Yes.
To do what she has done and the contributions that she has given to Kaysville City and the example that she sets for her kids and, and, and people around. And it's just awesome that you have people that are willing to do that. And she's, uh, done it well with diligence, but I'd hate to keep up with her. Sorry, Luke.
Spice lipping.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Good, good public comment.
Anybody else?
That was awesome.
Wants to say anything? Okay. All right, we will close, uh, call to the public and go to council member reports. Council member reports. Um-
I have a council member report.
Yes.
Okay, just for Kaysville Gives, we're gonna plug that again. It's available, it's online. Look on the city website. We still have tags that are available for people to take. For, uh, I think we're gonna support or help 80 families or something. I mean, there's, there's, there are quite a few people this time, um, more than last year. So, we just want everyone to take a tag and participate as you can.
And fill the fire truck is-
Yeah, this Saturday.
Saturday, 10 a.m.
From 10 till noon. And we're gonna have the Grinch and Olaf.
Ooh, and Olaf.
And who knows who else will show up. You never know.
Is John Adams the Grinch?
And John Adams.
And John-
Easter bunny!
Are you gonna be Buddy?
I, who knows?
That would be awesome.
I hope you're Buddy.
We will see.
That's really the only report worth making. Kaysville Gives, we've had a more slow start, would you say, Tammy, to, to donations so far?
Um, yeah, so we had more than a thousand tags and I think we have about half of them that have been spoken for, but we still have quite a few available, so spread the word.
And they haven't, but, yeah.
Yeah. We need to get those out.
All right, very good. Um, no, you do have something to say.
Uh-oh.
No, I don't.
Oh, you do? No, just, uh-
No, I can't.
Oh.
I gotta work with him tomorrow.
It's groundbreaking?
Oh, the groundbreaking, yes.
Who's he talking about?
Now I wanna know.
I know who you're talking about.
Yeah, now I'm interested.
Oh, yes, so, uh, um, we had this week, the official groundbreaking for Connect coming to Kaysville to install fiber throughout the city.
Huzzah.
Their crews are drilling and putting in conduit as we speak. Um, and they expect it'll take less than two years to, uh, finish the infrastructure throughout the city and give every resident an option for new broadband, uh, access. So, very excited to see that happen.
Huge win-win for the city. City's getting connected as well.
Private entity, private money being used for that. So, it's wonderful.
And the city's connected with-
Fiber.
With federal money, so.
Yep.
Just such a good, ju- good win. Just such a good, good win.
All right, thank you. Um, anything?
No.
Anything?
I don't dare say anything right now.
Right now?
Delay this any one more minute.
Okay. And did you know we have architecture review?
Yes, but that's gonna be so fast.
It will be, yes.
So, motion, motion to close this meeting?
Uh, hold on.
City manager report.
Oh, no, no. Uh, city manager, I think?
Dan.
I don't have much. December 22nd is our Christmas party, I hope that's on your radar. And we, we're, I think we don't have a lot of reasons to meet the rest of the week, the rest of the year, but we do have one item that we'll probably have to address for sure, if not two items. The first one is the, Utah League Season Towns is asking us to make a decision about joining an opioid lawsuit, and that needs to be, decision needs to be made for the end of the year. And as well as, Anne Marie and I were just talking about the voter participation areas, they need to be updated. The county will probably do that for us and put those areas together. We would need to adopt those before the end of the year as well. So, if they're not ready by the next meeting, I guess my question would be, do you want to have a meeting on the 16th, which is our next meeting, to talk about the opioid settlement? And then, do you want to have a meeting on December 28th, when the county, when the county gets the voter participation areas ready?
Yay!
Or you want to do both of those, whenever the county gets the voter participation areas ready?
Talk about the opioid, I thought.
Both, probably very short meetings, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Or you can think about it.
So I thought this was my last, I may have two more, is what you're telling me?
That's what I was thinking, it was so ironic. So your poor family has to come to two more meetings.
You guys have to come two more times.
Well, I would say we don't have, well, I mean, yeah.
We just make one meeting?
Make it one meeting, like, delay the opioid one.
So if the 16th isn't, if the voter participation areas aren't ready by the 16th, we would just put that meeting off until whenever they're ready, and do it as soon as we can that's not in conflict with Christmas.
That would be nice, yeah, well, no, preferably, preferably during, on Christmas.
On 25th, or 24th.
Both days.
So Shane, did you say, we'll postpone city council?
I'm actually just gonna sleep right here under this Christmas tree.
Okay, we'll postpone city council to wait for that voter participation.
Do it on the 16th, normal, or postpone it?
I don't think those voter participation areas will be ready by the 16th. It doesn't sound...
All right, let's...
We'll try, we'll do, it'd be nice to get them both in, but we'll do our...
And now can we close the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I will make a motion that we close the city council meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Do we have to, a motion to open the next one?
Um, I will just open, uh, the Kaysville City Architectural Review Committee meeting, and turn the time over to Dan Jessup.
Dan, it's like, it's winter.
Yeah. Are you in flip-flops? Yeah.
I'm having a hard time reading the room, till this last five minutes, and then I lighten right up, so, thank you. We've had some, some mittles for some architectural review, folks now, and what it is, is it's a 4.3 acres on Kays Drive, it's approximately 630 north. It's just the property east side road, south of Blaine Jensen's. There's two buildings proposed, they've got a 30,000 foot, a little over, 35,000 foot, the combination of the two would, um, constant, uh, be developed in the middle with the parking, or, I guess, let me show you the site plan that they want approved right there. It's shown the required drives for the frontage, it's shown adequate parking for the, for the two buildings, the combined square footage. They've done a landscape design there that shows that they have ample trees, I think they had one extra tree. They've tried to keep them out of the, the, there's easements for petroleum, there's sewer easements, they've kept the trees that way from where they needed to be. That picture that we keep going to there is the shell. Staff feels that they have, meet the minimum requirements in our, in our ordinance for the business park. It's block, colored block, they've accented the doors, they've stair stepped the top, pop outs, little window covers. They feel that they've met all the obligations they do for what's required there. There's buildings exactly like that, not similar, but they've added colored block and, and two-tone block and stuff. What they're asking for is approval for what they've submitted, so they can spend the money to design, develop from here on out. They didn't want to have a big obstacle before they spend the money. So they, it will come back to you folks, um, when, after all the construction drawings are done, and it's gone through, um, Josh and the Public Works Sewer District, everybody will look at it, building department, and then we'll get a final for it. But they do want approval for the site plan, I've shown the shell, if you have any recommendations that they could design into it, if there is reservations you guys have for it. And I'll just let you guys discuss it, if you have any questions. I don't believe they're here, but I'll do my best to translate what they've said to me today by phone, though.
Okay.
I guess that's about all I can do right now.
We're just reviewing it visually, architect.
We're just trying to get an indication. Do you have, the staff has no concerns or reservations with...
No, we're, we're, we're fine with it as far as, you know, what we've got on black and white for, for what was required there.
It's kind of like just a gut check, just to, so they know they're gonna go forward.
Yeah, they just don't want to spend the money to...
Yeah, design the whole thing.
If you guys see something, they want to know.
Okay, all right.
I think it looks, and I'm not just saying that, 'cause I want to go.
A committee member, Blackham.
Um, this is the building that the guy came in and talked to us earlier, who had put a lot of landscaping and stuff in his front, and I, I drove down there and looked around just the other day. I do tend to agree with him. I think this is very plain, is a street facade in the business park. When you look at some of the other buildings there, there's, uh, they seem to have a, a lot more curb appeal, I guess. This is very plain, I think the landscaping's very plain. I think there's a lot of things you could do, possibly maybe sidewalks in the front or something across with some planters, um, but, uh, something to accent the streetscape. And I, I do agree that the guy next door, and, and not for a lot of expense either...
Right.
That the guy next door did have a legitimate complaint.
Because he felt like he had done it.
And you look at the next one down, is the...
But did we require him to do that?
Is the, no, I think he just did it.
That's the thing, is...
But he, I think we did do some things, because of the outside storage, wasn't it the cars, so he did do a little more with his building.
And you talk about the car dealership?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, that's, because it's the type of business it is, too.
And then the Shipley Building next to that one, I believe, is a lot more dressed up from the curb across the street, that one's a little bit more...
So you're really talking, if you look at this, this view here, you're really talking about on the bottom of it, off 500, or 900 West Street?
Yeah.
Those, the small front areas of that, because the sides...
Yeah, the sides are fine, that's what they gotta be in order to, they're fine, you gotta use them, but I just think the front curb look, and I think that's all that guy was saying, was, you know, dress it up a little bit, or do something.
I drove around there, too, and I can understand his point. And that's not, it's not a heavy lift.
But I'm not a...
Can we ask that, or it's, where their meeting are?
I think we can, I think that's where the general plan, the hope...
That's why we're here. The, the business park, this way, we're different, because the business park has definitely different requirements that we can require on people. We don't want to be cumbersome, but...
Yeah, or heavy-handed.
But we have more...
Heavy-handed, but we do understand that we, our business park is a really nice business park.
Can you go back to the picture that showed the, the aerial photo? No, the, there we go.
That one?
It's beautiful right now.
Oh, stop.
Well, because this is the, this is the, the car dealership straight, is the one with all the...
To the south, yeah?
Yeah.
Where all the cars are?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good of the elevation, you know, it just shows the buildings.
Could we just make it as a recommendation, like approve it and say, "But we also recommend", you know?
Nope, one back.
Put some effort into that, that frontscape.
So if you look here, the top two are the front elevation that, that Mr. Blackham is talking about, committee member Blackham.
Yeah.
And, and I guess I'd just say, what would you recommend we give them as guidance on what to do to, to make that, uh, street elevation view better?
You know, um, obviously, it would look a lot better if it had an entrance from that side with curbs and planters and those types of things, and maybe there's a way that he can incorporate into still having the garage doors and the same thing, but turn and have the entrances towards 900 West.
I think, I mean, if I, if I look at this, this is, they're trying to lease out different component pieces.
They are.
This is not like one building where they can move the entrance.
And it's not, and that's why I'm saying, where they've got the entrances on the north and front, if they were able on those corners on 900 West, instead of having the entrance next to the garage door, they would move it to the front, and then they would have some walkways and some planters and some more landscaping, maybe, in that area, just to give it a little more.
Wouldn't they maybe lose the depth of their units, though?
I don't, well, I don't know, because it looks to me like, if I look at it, I don't know.
I agree, they could do something. It, it looks like it's the side of a building, if it's the front of the building, it should look like the front of a building. I mean, it would be great if it did, right?
Put their best face forward.
Yes, make it look like an entrance.
Is there sidewalk on the rest of that street? I don't even...
That's what I'm saying, if they had the doors at the front, I think...
No, there's not sidewalk down...
Yeah.
A mural?
Some bikes.
Yeah, anyway.
I would actually like to have them suggest some...
Come to us and tell us, love.
But I don't want to hold them up.
So, is there specific things that you do want me to relay to them?
It would be nice if they were here.
Because this is, this is the discussion we had. He says, "It is what it is, it's a warehouse, and that's..."
Maybe they can paint doors that are comparable.
I think, I think, Mike, I think if you really care, and I think it's a good suggestion, say, "Take that small area and add some landscape", this is yours, but if you feel that way, I would, I would recommend saying that.
I think he should do something. Right now, it is just absolutely plain, and if you drive down 900 West, most of those buildings have put a lot of effort into the street look-scape to them, and this one doesn't appear to have a lot.
So maybe just tell him, come back and do something to it. So that we're, so that we're not telling him what he should do, but just bring some creative solutions.
And it sounded like he was open to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, he wanted to...
Yes, he want, he wanted specific...
Bring, bring us some options.
I kind of feel like he's trying to get away with the bare minimum.
Specifics.
He can come back and watch this discussion.
Instead of us telling him.
All right, I, I would...
Does that mean you're okay with whatever he does, then? Because you, if you don't want him to come back...
Yeah, if he comes back...
Are you just okay with whatever he does, if he does something better?
Puts one more tree in there, are you gonna be happy?
Or are you saying he has to come back and show us a plan, and then we'll...
He is coming back.
I want to know what you guys think. Do you guys think this is something that you, this is Kaysville City's business park? Is this how you want the streetscape to look in Kaysville City's business park?
We currently have some warehousing-type buildings over there that have really no streetscape at all. We do.
But are we gonna up...
I think some of them look nice.
The ante. Are we gonna...
You look at the front of Blaine Jensen's and their quarter brochure, they've done,